It's blue, okay?
Yeah, I got it. I was just, I don't know.
No, it's fine.
No, I always. That was the only change.
Was that?
That was the only change.
Well, the.
Well, in the, in the splitting up of.
Prebanded. The other thing was I had to incorrect amount of debt service. But we'll deal with that later, so just need to have you sign yet and we can be all set. Because we want to make sure we get that to the printer tomorrow.
You're good with taking it up? You're good with taking it up?
I'm gonna take it up.
I was gonna say, you're good with doing that?
Yeah, cuz I'll be probably going to tell anyone. Make sure we get the pages. Right. Sign it wrong?
No, we dated them. Yeah, I was following Amy and dated it, dated it up.
That's okay. It doesn't hurt to have an extra. So I'll secure that. Okay, it is seven o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is our pledge of allegiance. Okay, this evening we have Amy Free, myself, Russ Edwards, Joe Marco, and our administrative assistant Melissa in attendance. And the first thing on the agenda is to sign or approve the previous minutes from January 24th. You've got a copy in front of you.
Is there anything you need to change? Just did it.
Oh, okay.
It's just a matter of a second to change the name, that's it.
Point that out to Melissa?
I did, she's the one that changed it.
Oh, alright. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve with the corrected minutes.
I make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Well, you've already got it, so. Now, Melissa, I see this for the pledge hearing, is this a separate one?
That is, so you intend to have a separate.
And we have the pledge hearing, basically the minutes, which are simply the reading of the warrant articles of budget, public comments, and then the German. So. I think you've got a copy there as well. Or if not, you know.
No, no, not of that one.
Yep.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve that as well.
Second?
Very well, all in favor?
Aye.
I approve it as well. Which copy do you want us to sign? Okay, we gotcha. That brings us to Sullivan County Commissioners. Oh, singular, well, that's quite all right. Welcome to have you here. If you, if you wouldn't mind using the microphone, it'll all hear well. And if you'd state your name, so our administrative assistant could put it in the minutes.
Ted Nelson, yes, Commissioner Hebert's wife had dental time from the middle school. And Mr. Oscar, so I'm here. And just trying to do a thing with the counties, see if you guys have any questions. And the first thing for me is Sullivan County, how does it develop that these are set? And we commission try to do by voting about development, but not do chief of industry and that type of thing. They're very complex, they're their own thing, so. We use some of the COVID money from the beds to commission, you know, that relates some of the regional planning commissions to do this countywide. And it's kind of a snapshot, got the history, population, town population through 2040. Economic, educational levels of the county, all kinds of interesting information. And my hope is it helps with if you're soliciting a program, they like to see this type of thing. I brought one copy, I'll leave with you guys that is on our website. So, SullivanCounty.org, you can get it. It's still in the comments pages, so if you see anything you like or don't like, call. And I think, I think it's been similar, but they're, they're, it was all available, it's still in the comments pages. So I'll leave this one.
Yeah, give it to our assistant and she'll keep it with our minutes, that'd be great. Thank you.
These guys are another. We're from the front table, this is kind of our road show.
Two and maybe three, so I'm gonna go back, and if there are any questions, just give a. The, our biggest project is nursing home renovation. We, at the county's own budget, it was 1930s building, 1970s building. The 1930s building was the original county hospital, nursing home. Was not up to COVID in 1970s, so the new, when it was built, it was 1930s, it's been offices, that type of stuff, so. And then, and people with, there were two people to a room, two rooms backing up the bathroom, so like four residents in shared bathroom. You know, showers, showers and rooms, so. Long story short, it was Ashley. It's been five years in the planning. What's gonna happen is the 1930s building is gonna be demolished. They're gonna put up a new part of, some of the residents will move in there. And they're gonna re-throw up the 1970s, and it's not gonna be tied to all, still two residents to a room, but they will start a window. And two residents sharing a bathroom with a bathroom or a shower. So it's, it's kind of up to, is it not changing, but a lot better than it was. So that's on the wing, it's gonna be three and a half year project. It will represent, when all things done, probably a 90% increase, which is five quarter per thousand spread over to the whole county. Won't happen, not much is gonna happen this year, some COVID money will be spent first. So it won't see an impact on taxes or anything. And it won't be huge with it spread over the county. It was a big dot, that's the way, it made it bigger. Trying to win the other days along, and it was a lot of money to be concerned, we had COVID screwed things up. The upside of waiting is we're able to get 25 million more from Concord. They have Concord has a lot of federal COVID money rattling around, they need to spend by 25 or something like that, so. We're able to get, Senator Sime was able to get 2 million. We used to call it John Fork, now it's, it's Wesley. Wesley, like the spending or something like that, so. So it, it cost more by being delayed, but the upside is we got more help. And we're still trying to get help, and Northern Waters has lots of money, so we're, we're still thinking, so. The less we, the more we can give from the source, the less we have to offer. So that's the first of what the state is going through. First page, alright. Sullivan House is now open. My big surprise from the county commissioner was, you know, I knew nursing home stuff to jail, like if somebody would do something stupid, three months or six months and not do it again. But they have, corrections guys have life on your soul, it is same surname, and go through. And especially now with the drug epidemic. The longer somebody can stay sober, the bigger chance they have sober, staying sober, and they're all put a house correction. Coming back to Brighton, or Newport, or San Antonio where housing is the last step. We use rent money, we could use some tax money, we bought the old people building in Claremont, at evil times. And it's, and anybody, someone coming out of house of corrections, others will TLC, if anybody's been through a treatment program and is approved. It will provide housing, supervised housing, protein, they don't have to work, and they rent, it's a small one rent, so hopefully they can. Get first and last month, so somebody can find a rent somewhere, short term. To keep them from getting traffic, the folks that they've got to cover. I think about 14 residents, 22 was full. And so that's in, had to hunt for a while to find, of course, this looks up, there was a treatment center in downtown. Employers helped us get it open, the city council was employers, they're all employed. But now there's this arranged transportation for a couple of people. And a lot, you know, we're concerned with going to those students, fast food, making 17 bucks an hour, so, you know, walking distance, you know. And so they're working, and employers are thrilled that they're up there. Land paint, a big program. Claremont has a lot of many, lots of, like, every time, but they have a lot of farm owners. One roofed, they weren't big enough to apply for headlights, so. Big chunk, so they came to us, we applied for countywide, let it be a grant. Got 1.7 million. I think we done one housing before you. A lot of Claremont, a couple of new work, love to have, if anybody knows an old house, and the criteria is, is hot roofs, but. The more kids, they're trying to get laid away from kids, so it could be grandmother's houses, there are a lot of kids there or something, but. So kids and income eligibility, that's on the website, the lady's name, the administrators, they can come do the test. And she can tell you how old or qualified, that type of thing. But we'd love to get out and about a little more, so they'll come do the testing. And even now, you work, and you know, it's three, the Henson, Cedar, the Hampshire, Nashua, and Manchester, the only grantees in the state. And I was thrilled to see somebody other than the same old, same old. So that's, that's ongoing. It's kind of a secret reason, they said we're writing, not, not countywide. And this was something we, and extension has been fun development agent, so we were able to grant that to the upper extension. Which is the three-legged stool for county federal funding. So they're a University of Hampshire employee, we're in between now, we're the last one, trying to find out. We'll work out the extension office, make sure you sort of, more regions, it's not just for us, but she was at a, I mean, NLP was the last one. With their vice, they were signing the Blue Eleven project. She looked at, that kind of follows the Chippewa River. And so we started talking on Chippewa River region. We're not really Upper Valley, we're not really Wake County region, you know, Brighton, Claremont, Newport. The rest of the world doesn't know exists, you know, I'm a moniker, so. This is, so to end, I grew up in Actwood, so, but my wife grew up on Chippewa River, and it doesn't have the biggest, best connotation for 25 or 30 years ago. Now it's incredible draw for recreation, you just look to rail there. Ties together, you know, some banks, you know, friends that were coming to you, you know, the Goocher Ocean. You know, it doesn't live longer than Actwood, but pretty much ties the history of the mill power, the greater recreation town. And so we got a grant, USDA grant, and hired consulting people, they've come up with the logo, with some little bumper stickers. Trying to figure out a way to, steering committee, board directors, with the Ocaris Chamber Commerce people, that type of thing. Trying to make it self-sustaining, the way they do it in some parts of the country is voluntary tax on the televisions, which we don't have many of. With the swag and t-shirts, and trying to make it self-sustaining. Working with the chambers to try and get a website up and going. And there's a meeting coming up. The consultant coming up to unveil the website. It'll be on, I think it's next week, but anybody interested, this is current county office, and find out right there, cuz you're, Chippewa River will be coming up. Trail project, again, we're working with a boundary come DC to the map and identify trails in the area. That's becoming real, becoming, you know, a staple model of bike trails and that type of thing, you know, a lot of people come in and spend money. So they're trying to map all trails and see if they're connected, and part of it is to see if they can find a way for them to rock and down, maybe get the store and that type of stuff. Natural Resources and Conservation District, and the Public Saturday, this is Conservation District. The two things we're by statute, I mean, you have the jail and the Conservation District. So Lionel Stevens of Conservation District Supervisor, and they, down at Saturday, they've got a grant, when he's wide, so in the fall. Set up a bake, and the volunteers will come and press paper out of your own apples. And he's done tons of trails, and part of it, hopefully, we can do is, the county owns a lot of, you're seeing Eddy and Claremont, is to get the public. And so he's done everything from mushroom identification, bird identification, all kinds of different stuff, and there's a lot of hiking trails, that type of stuff. Producers, cameras are all, all in here. Says grant writings, the county requires grant writers. We've been doing well with grants, doing it on our own, departmental, is a special expertise. So we've got a guy sort of on retainer, and we hope we'll pay for it, and it's what we're looking for for grants, but. If capacity allows, if you guys have a grant, something you've identified with one council. We need a new floor for the library, but he's not gonna go out there and look for a library floors. If you have a project and probably wants it up quite a way, but or a grant, you know, he will help us with the Ts, not the Is, and that type of thing, so. Capacity allows, that would be available. For dental education, we, not for the business, folk and machine tools, whatever we're covering, available, so they haven't helped get employees. And so we had the two technical senators in Claremont Newport High School, busy during the day, not so much at night. We used a little bit of county money, got some grant money, and basically paid for the instructor, we've done. Welding in Newport, HVAC and machine tool in Claremont, and apartment class in Claremont. And the welding one, whatever we call it, we're hovering around, and hired a couple of guys out of there. Doesn't make you proficient, but gives you the basics, and that's kind of what industry's looking for, and the HVAC one, you know, a lot of, a lot of muscles were hired. We have had a couple of, if capacity allows, some workers that want to improve their skills, but it's more for people looking to first create a change. We're hoping it will become self-sustaining, the industry was set on some money, and that has not happened yet, so I'm not sure whether it's gonna continue or not. Economic development grants, the county, each town is available to get those. If you've got a big project, we've used ours, we have used the county, because that was for a couple of years too. We've done that, helped out with projects. One open up here is the sheriff's phone, with grant money, and his, something that we think has now has a drone, and they have just a lot of, maybe you. I'm quite sure he's a police supplier, but so they should know about it, but there is a drone available, it is looking for somebody missing in Cornish. I'm, I was looking for a hotspot, and so it's down, I'm pretty sure police fire. And the other thing we want here, we also are struggling to find employees. And so we've been pushing this, we're trying to get LAs, and we're running, we've done LNA pushes through the Newport Tech Center. But we have an in-house mayor, and so we're actually bringing high school kids in, making 14 bucks an hour, and to be unitized, we basically tag on probably LAs, somehow. But they're also sitting, of course, to become LAs, and at the end they'll be licensed LAs, hopefully come to workforce, and we do have some educational training. We work with Rival and get nursing training, but basically if you go for LNA, to OPM, to. LNA to nurse, and not have, will lose that, a career that's just been added. Wrong, so, oh, we're, what did it impact on? On tax issue, or probably, what will we be impacted here? We're gonna have to give people some raise this year, and I don't know, it's county tax rate, it's been, lost for about six or eight years. And, you know, we used to be able to hire people in dietary, laundry pretend to be now, or those days ago. Nursing, nursing is not, so that, don't know how much, but that may be a hit on that trade, as I say. The good news is worth a $2.70 portion of tax rate, not the big one, but it probably will be last year. Probably residential is the big thing, is try to get away from kids, I mean, if it were a school, I honestly can't, sure. But give a call, maybe it'll be, but it's not county. Big thing I know is try to get away from kids, so I don't know whether they would come.
Great, thank you very much, we appreciate you communicating with us.
One story, more story. In the middle of, with sheriff and the state, they're having deals to get to the high school, one certain thing. Nursing home institutional places had tons of products, with the schools were shut down, restaurants were shut downs, our food service people just added. Added more red county work, she picked up nursing home, you know, so. So even something, you know, if the delegate recall, you know, they would get out, they would can, and that was, that was a little nice thing that was easy, it was win-win. and was win-win, and, uh, so we're, I'm sure as I say, the institution, people, they were happy, every, half a day, half a day shutdown, it worked out, worked out well. Just, still, thank you sometimes for work out.
Thank you very much.
I would stand for buzzing fourteen.
Okay, the next thing I have on the agenda is a discussion about town meeting, and I just was gonna bring that up just so that everybody was aware that town meeting is going to be here at the town hall. The, uh, town report is going to the publishers tomorrow. It'll be out, I'm not sure exactly when, but they usually get it printed up for us fairly quick, so we'll be able to have that out. The warrant, uh, article that I originally posted was the one that we'd printed from D R A. That's not what we normally have in our town report. We have one that's crafted a little bit different. It's an older style that has the breakdown of the, uh, budget in just the general categories. Charlene and I finished that up today. There was just a couple corrections we had to make to give to the printer, and again, that'll be printed in the green separate section as usual, so everybody can find it easily. So we'll have that out and available as posted tomorrow, and then it'll be in the actual town report. The next item I had on the, pardon me.
With the potential to exceed capacity over the through, is there a reason that we, that folks chose not to use our, to?
We didn't expect that we would exceed the capacity as from the past, uh, years. Now, if, plus the meeting is actually up to the moderator, it's not to the town, uh, the select board, the select location. So if we end up with a situation where it is really exceeding the fire marshal's limits, then we could, at that point, adjourn the meeting temporarily and move to another location, such as the fire department, which has a larger hall.
Do you know what the fire capacity for?
For this building, it's one hundred. For the, uh, the fire department, I believe it's one fifty, I'm not positive on that. But the, uh, fire department also has the option of opening up their, uh, hall area where they have the fire equipment part, moving it out so there'd be more standing room space.
Plus, they have two TVs out in the area, okay, broadcast out.
We've been looking at this, trying to figure out what would be the appropriate. We expect the school district meeting to be larger than the town meeting, so there, I'm not sure what they're up to, because according to the information I have that we posted, we're publishing in the town report, it doesn't give a location. I've heard that from what's different postings are on Facebook, which I do not get on, they're talking about being at the fire department. Yes.
So they mentioned the fire department with Bruce, not at last night's meeting, but the previous meeting?
Right.
And he was in favor of that, and he?
Okay, and like I said, it's up between?
They needed to confirm that, last night, they discussed confirming that with moderator and the select, for some reason, they were.
It's not up to the select board.
So?
So it'd be nice for us to know.
So the thought was to have it kind of in the same location, so it was?
Right. Well, like I said, if the situation develops that there's too many people for this building, the moderator has the authority to, uh, basically put the meeting on hold and say, okay, it's being moved to a new location, and then reconvene the meeting at that location. So, uh, I spoke to Bruce this afternoon, and he still didn't have a firm idea if the school district had really confirmed, Jason, whether that was all set or not.
Last time we meeting, school board, they were trying to figure out if Bruce would confirm.
Yeah, Jason's waiting here for Bruce.
Everybody's waiting for the next person.
Yeah, yeah, basically, he was waiting here for Bruce.
So it sounds like last night, maybe we'll get on that.
So, do you have any idea, you mean, Bruce?
Uh, I've gotten nothing from her today, so that's all I can tell you at this point. I would say, let's be flexible and be ready to move to the fire department if necessary, or already go down there if it's already decided to have it at that pitch. We still have a few weeks before we have meeting, so I think some way we get this hammered out and make sure it's publicized.
You gotta get the school board to the select board meeting, and Bruce at the same.
Yeah.
And Jason Brooke, because he could go and that plays out tomorrow for the next day, if people don't hurry up and get out of the pot.
I spoke to him probably a month ago, giving him a heads up, saying, we might need it, and I think he's kept that in mind, so he won't do that.
And we have discussed it at the last summer board meeting too, so.
Yeah, so, I, like I said, uh, we'll try to get this hammered out in the next couple of weeks to make sure that it's all set and it's publicized, so people know where to go.
I'll just stop where we see the most cars.
Well, we'll just run back and forth in a few places. Okay, uh, the other thing that I have on the agenda is to recommend, uh, Dominic DiMaggio, uh, for the zoning board. There's been some confusion in the town about how somebody gets on a different board. Part of our discussion has been, well, if there's an opening and somebody wants it, the board should just, you know, pretty much accept them. Well, by digging into different things and Bruce working with me, we realized that ultimately for the zoning board, people should be making the select board know that they have an interest in a position, and then the select board has the responsibility to recommend that person to the moderator, because he's in charge of actually, uh, appointing them to the zoning board. It's a convoluted process that we just didn't realize, and it's been just misused in the past, so we're trying to clean it up. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to have Dominic DiMaggio appointed, uh, being recommended to Bruce Jasper as a zoning board member.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I will, Melissa, can you communicate that to Bruce tomorrow?
Yes.
Perfect. That way, he's got the authority to go ahead and appoint a person based on the recommendation. And we, we all know Dominic, he's been a, a good citizen, he's got lots of different ideas, he's been on the planning board in the past, so this was not a hard decision. So, um, under old items, website email. We've got our town website up and operational, but it did not come with an email provider. So we have been existing with our existing website, our, our email, which is the, uh, selectboardcroydon@hotmail.com, and we also have had a separate email at the, uh, croyden-damshire website that was been provided by, um, WebSpring, or Spru, I forget the name of it. It is not a very efficient web email provider, uh, it basically has a lot of hiccups, and what we've been looking at, or I'm looking at Aaron McKeon's advice, has been Proton email. And it sounds like they've got a pretty good program, I've got a personal account of them, and it works much better, but I needed to get a little information. So we need to figure out how many basic email addresses we need. I expect we need one for the town clerk, the administrative assistant, we probably should have one for each of the boards, so they're separate, the select board, planning board, and zoning board. And past that, I wasn't sure. You have any suggestions?
If, um, it happens at town meeting that they vote to, um, increase the select board from three members to five, we should add a couple.
Uh, that's on the warrant for this town meeting.
Right, but if you say, I want you to, um, to add them on the email, you might want to add a couple of strokes, in case.
There's only one email address for the select board.
Or you don't each have your own.
No, 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 we use one so that all of it comes in and we each can look at it, so that it's not like one person would get the email and not the others. That way, we're making sure that everybody's getting the correct information.
What about the other, like, committees, like, certain planning committees, do you have one for the committees?
Uh, at this point, we don't have any other committees, and they actually should be responding to the select board straight. The only volunteer committee we've got is the broadband committee, and that is composed of two people, uh, Allison and Dale, and, um, you know, they basically get active when there's some information that's trying to be, uh, either found and communicated to the select board so we can get it out to the people, or we're getting the information together and sending it to a proposed provider. So far, this has been an extremely frustrating experience and no results.
Close their policy.
He means the boards. He, he already said all the boards are gonna have their own individual. Yeah.
I have another one, what's that? The health, so, yeah, Mitchell, should there be a separate one for health, if someone has a health issue, right? That she has?
That's, that's a good possibility. Yeah. Now, the number of email addresses we request was certainly gonna increase the cost, but that's, that's an expected thing these days. If we wanna be able to communicate with everybody in the community, we need to be, make it easy for everybody to communicate with us as well. Yes, Kim?
So, right now, I'm with the county, we have a page for the planning board, we don't have a page for the zoning board. I think I'll work on that, with the page for the clerk, page for selectmen, page for highlight, and page for transfer station. I can create a page for the health officer, I can create a page for animal control officer. We're not connected to the school website, the school board web at all. If you want to merge the two, so that we have one comprehensive website, then they can become part of the new town website instead of running their own.
Uh, I think that's something we're gonna have to discuss with them, because I don't know their feelings on it at this point.
Otherwise, we link to theirs. It would just be, create a school page, and it would be a link to their website, and they would be able to have to update, maintain that.
I've been trying to look at the stuff that, uh, Grantham uses for website, they've got a pretty good one. They also have a, kind of an email newsletter that goes out periodically as a way of communicating with people that's quite, quite efficient, because they were highlighting things such as the closure of their transfer station this past, uh, weekend when it was so very, very cold, and we made the same decision, but we didn't have the easy way of communicating it. We had it on our website, but that's not the same as sending it out, it's kind of an email. We need to double check how much it's gonna cost us, but.
There's, there's some parts, so we can set up alerts, and people can sign up for those alerts, but it means we have to let people know that they can go in and sign up, and have some pushed out to their phone, or to their individuals, they have, they have to sign up for it. They can sign up to get an agenda to their email, agenda to their test, um, minutes can come in, and any kind of emergency, the news alert.
I like, I like the pet, uh, is that what it's, what is it, the animal control?
The animal control.
Yes, I mean, I have dogs all over the place, and I was gonna call the cops today, I'm sick of calling the cops. I would rather be able to click that button, beat down this person, send them to do their job.
So we just have to create pages for that, we just have to know what it is.
I, I think we need to figure out a time to gather some additional ideas, what we want on the website.
Yeah.
Did you have something?
I like your, I, um, of that, like, the type of thing, like, text and the text, that would fit through, and I was wondering if we could let some of the things have the available, or is it something you can add down there?
The availability is there on the website, it's, it's a very comprehensive website, we just haven't put it together, set up a usage form yet.
But the reason I'm saying that is that it's something that's always been my desire, is one place of information, these were different towns, basically, you're not having to listen, but what I'm saying, what I'm thinking is, and, and, like, some have done this year, so I recognize, that's a great thing to announce a town meeting, we've got people there, you know, because it's only for this type of noise available. I'm very excited about that, I love that kind of thing, but, um, maybe that's something that could be just somehow mentioned at town, you know, the options, give people the options that's available, so that if it's not good now, they can watch that on the website, they can know about it.
I would love to be able to actually give people, maybe a little survey, this, what would you like to have? Would you like another, or would you sign up to get, um, minutes, would you, would you sign up to know what's going on in town? Would you come in and give us some ideas for our newsletter? Would you like to see an animal control officer page, or a health officer page? What is it that you would like on your website? What is it you would look for for news from the town? And then they can see what we've put together and actually push back out to everyone.
At this point, if you have any ideas that you'd like added, or things for us to consider, email the, uh, select board right now to the, you know, selectboardcroydon@hotmail.com, and we will start working on trying to figure out what things we want to add. We finally got a good enough email provider, or a website provider that's a powerful enough engine that can really support whatever we want, we just need to figure out what it is. And, you know, there's so many different ideas out there, uh, you know, the three of us can't figure them out all our own.
I just think the potential of such an easy, we, social media is a great place to put things, because people are on there anyway, and now it's such that there's so much on there, we receive them.
And this.
Back to like a text or, or something, if things are lost in all of the.
Right. All the Facebook pages are not official town websites or anything, so if, if we want to put something out that's considered official information, that's why it needs to be on the town website.
And everybody hears the same thing.
Yes.
This is the house.
Right.
I love that.
Yeah, me too.
The next item I have on the agenda is, as part of an old business, nude lake property sale. What a headache this has been. The, the bidder that won the bid for the piece of property lives in Massachusetts, and we started the process off very nice, and I thought we were gonna be able to go to closing before, you know, before a month or two. Then all of a sudden, I couldn't contact him for months on end, and send emails, leave phone messages, nothing. Finally, I contacted our town lawyer to say, can we rescind this bid and put it back out to somebody that's gonna buy it? Well, that was enough to stimulate them to take more action. They've got a lawyer, you know, that's communicating with us for the stuff that he would like to see as far as getting the closing. to see as far as getting the closing done. So this past week, Christie has put together a package of information that shows when the town took the property over, all the other bits and pieces that go with it. She's sending it to our town lawyer and town lawyer is going to send it to their lawyer. So hopefully before too long, we will get this piece of property sold, which will have the benefit of two things. One, we won't be paying the Loon Lake Property Health Association fees and we'll get cash income for the sale of the property to deal with. So I figured it was better to get a little bit of an announcement out there as to what's going on with that. And then something that was looked, I think we started the discussion last meeting, the old property, old cemetery.
Right. Um, I made a comment that I thought I knew which one it was and I was told, no, that it wasn't that one, it was another one. Um, I need to verify which one it is because I have an butter of a cemetery interested in purchasing.
Oh, excellent.
Okay, so I just need to verify that that's the one that's for sale.
As, as I understand it from the trustees, it's just a little piece, not very.
It's, it's, if it's the one I think it is, it's kind of triangular shape, goes from about fifteen feet wide to maybe, or twenty to about fifteen, twelve feet wide, something like that. And probably maybe twenty-five yards long.
Wouldn't it be nice to get rid of that as far as having a piece of town property that isn't doing anything? Okay.
I have a question.
Sure. Let, I was going to just cover some correspondence.
Well, this was the oldest thing from the last meeting. I just wanted an update on the Sandville property.
Oh, okay, I gave the information to Jane and at this point it's possible litigation. So if you want more information, we have to go back.
Okay.
But Jane has it, so.
Okay. Okay, we took here Dominic Maggio. Is that tall?
Yes, what did I called? When they sent in the checks, they didn't send the paper that said what we did for training. They didn't go with. In fact, the insurance paper for the deck went with mine because when they returned it, I opened it up and I'm like, what? So I called her Monday and everything that's hitting on. So I just, I rescind it. I, I made up new papers, rescind it.
Okay. And a bill from Clayton for some of the work that we just did as per our request. That's.
He's quicker with that than he is getting the work done.
Huh?
He's quicker with that than he is getting the work done.
Well. The money, I don't know, he's going to pay his taxes somehow. Um, correspondence from United Construction. Let's see. United Construction is happy to announce the implementation of a new scale software for our aggregate pit, which will allow us to send invoicing via email.
It's been a nightmare, but it's going to be magic once it's all done.
Okay. Okay, so it looks like one of us needs to respond with, with an email address and deal with that, that looks like me. Workplace discrimination stuff from U.S. Employment. The Hampshire Municipal Association is pleased to present our updated revised charter government handbook. Handbook is designed to provide city and town council members and all the persons a thorough and decked introduction to the governance of municipalities with municipal charters. We don't have a charter, we don't need to do with that. That's simple.
Can I say something before I forget?
Sure.
Um, the, after the election, the classes should start for municipal association. So I'll keep an eye out for them.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's quite a few things from the.
Yeah, yeah, the knowing the territories.
In fact, uh, here's one Thursday. Uh, next webinar from the New Hampshire Office of Planning and Development, uh, Planning Punches at Nude Monthly Webinar. This is navigating the planning and zoning board handbooks. So this is Thursday, February sixteenth, twelve to one.
I'm good with the handbook.
Okay.
But the, uh, knowing the territory, that's a class.
Yeah, it's a combination of two of the other classes.
Yeah, because it covers uh, right to know and the different things that it has.
And the good governance. Except, they normally have those two separate, but knowing the territory is together.
Kind of puts them all together.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, this other thing is from the, again, from the New Hampshire Office of Spring two thousand twenty-three Planning and Zoning Conference, April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, eight forty-five, three thirty, online.
Kim's interested in that.
It's free, which is nice. Registration opens March seventeenth. You got to wait a while before signing on. Uh, New Hampshire Municipal, just a number of things that are available coming up. Assistance to firefighters grants, finance of property, taxis and resources, there's a number to look at. Um, I'll leave it at the end. I still have the uh, resignation for, from Ed Little.
Mm-hmm.
Have you talked to Carl?
Carl's jumped on it. He said absolutely.
Okay, then I'll put this in the personnel file and we can.
He uh, already talked with Ed. They set up for him to come in and start training.
Perfect, perfect. Got a building permit. Was seeing if we have the, oh, is there two? Looks like it's two. YMCA Camp Consta- oh.
Oh, okay.
Okay, relocation of existing office building, you know, they, they.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
That was interesting seeing all of a sudden, hmm, it's up in the air. And then summer arts and crafts building using existing footprint foundation of camp office. That's what all the rafters were that I followed in the other day. Uh, that was interesting. I came across, you know, the ballet's truck, all those long, uh, tractor trailer truck. And I thought, how, how is he going to turn that corner? He managed with one backup.
Yeah.
That was amazing, so. I'll let you start signing that one. Signing that one. Yeah, they've, and then on the space, because as I understand it, their office was far enough off the beaten path and it kind of was, that nobody knew where it was and they were always going to the wrong buildings. So this way they put it right down the main entrance area. And then one is.
Don't have to sign that. The backside, the class six. She was going to sign the class six. I don't have to.
Just here.
Yeah, that's the only place.
Yeah.
Yeah, so she was gonna.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
I hear that, I'll sign this other page, Joe.
Two thirteen twenty-three, not one. It's amazing. I scrubbed a month, but I don't scrub the year.
Yeah.
Okay. That could be set. And that stays in the building permit folder. And this one was handed to me just at the beginning of the meeting. It's a current use assessment. What do we need to do on that?
You need to ask Chuck.
Got to ask Chuck?
Yeah, because Christie has to do something with it because she has to do the actual.
Okay, so I will have to check with them, I checked with Christie tomorrow.
She has to do the actual numbers and everything.
Yep, okay. So then we will push that off to next meeting. Down. I don't think I've got anything more. You have, Ed?
Did you get the letter about the warrant being run out? During the last meeting, or two, the, uh, the warrant article, my report, um, for the equipment purchase.
Yes.
You asked, the last meeting, it was not recommended by the board. You said you could give it.
Yep.
Perhaps you do, uh, new consideration and perhaps change the recommendation on what you mentioned offered. That's still something that's.
At this point, it's all published or basically ready to be published, so I don't want to change that at this point because it's been submitted to DRA and everything else. We will address it at town meeting. As, as it gets brought up. How, I think that's going to be the easiest way because I'd run the risk of not having the town report published in the timeframe that the RSA requires. We're under the gun to get everything printed, posted, and published prior, as, as specific days prior to the town meeting.
So it's, or to be read as not recommended.
So the only thing that we've got different is, right now it says not recommended by the select board. We will, I will make the statement that based on the information that we've received since the time that petition was submitted, that we've changed our mind.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Thank you all for coming. Jesus, you all right? Hit a boot? Don't forget your button. Don't forget to press your button.
Oh, thank you. I'm like, what about the button?
I already told you, I couldn't bribe anybody if I wanted to. People know me so much.